Good morning. How very special it has been to organize, with huge help from others, of course, this extraordinary conference on women and their inclusion in the economy. And how very satisfying it is to see this assemblage of experts here to share their knowledge and views. This conference is a project of the Center on Capitalism and Society, which formed in 2001 and became operational a year later. I want to thank all the participants for making the trip here and giving us your time. Some of you have come from as far as China. Let me take this opportunity to express my thanks to Lizzie Fiedelson, the center's administrative manager, for her extraordinary work in making this event happen. And also my thanks to Catherine Picula, the assistant to the director, that's me, for helping me out at every turn. Without further ado, I suggest we begin.
Should I sit with you first and then?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay. Yes, that's the forward. Good morning. I'm Mary Jane O’Deen of the School of International and Public Affairs. It's my really enormous pleasure to moderate this morning's keynote discussion with Yan Lian. Yan Lian, as you will see from the biography, is indeed a household name in China. She's a leading broadcast journalist and media entrepreneur. She is the co-founder of the Sun Media Group and the Sun Culture Foundation. And today she will be talking about women's empowerment and the incredible work that she is doing through her media platforms to educate, engage, and support lifelong learning for women across China. What is not in her bio is many, many things. Her extraordinary involvement with organizations around the world, her 40 million followers, her dynamic and forward-thinking about key issues facing not only women but society broadly. She recently completed a 12-part documentary series on artificial intelligence a couple of years ago and is about to launch another. So we have in Lian Yan, who I'm proud to say is a graduate of the School of International and Public Affairs, someone who is dynamic, creative, has an enormous appreciation in China and is doing tremendous work in support of women's education, inclusiveness, and advancement. So please join me in thanking Lian Yan for being here from China. We'll have a chance to hear a brief presentation and then a small exchange between us. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I'm a very proud graduate from CIPA and it's always thrilling and happy to be back on campus. I've never been to this exquisite hall before. Thank you, Professor Phelps, to invite me, although I have to skip some other important events on campus afterwards to make this happen. But I'm very happy to be here because the topic we are covering today is very dear to my heart. I've been in television business for 30 years, starting when I was five. But now, of course, we see a lot of disruptions in media. And for the past 10 years or so, I have been dedicated a lot of my effort and time to women's education, which I believe is a very positive and definite power to move the society forward. And so today, I would like to take 15, 20 minutes to make a brief overview on women in business innovation in China. And also, I look forward to have a conversation with Mary after words. So let me begin. Well, first of all, for those who are not that much familiar with the economic background of the topic I cover today, I'd like to give you like a bunch of different figures. So Chinese economy is in the process of transformation from "Made in China," the biggest manufacturing country in the world, to "Created in China" or "Branded in China," which focuses on technological innovation, business innovation, and creativity. So our GDP in 2018 was about $13 trillion US dollars, making us the second-largest economy in the world with an average of 60.6% GDP growth every year, about the same expectation this year too, which contribute to the world economic growth by 30%. So we're a very important engine for economic growth on an international basis. And also, for the past decade or so, we see that Chinese government and the population are embracing new technology with much more readiness and eagerness than many other countries in the world. So we have some of the most updated infrastructures, like the biggest expensive high-speed train networks. The mobile internet is very widespread in China. We have more than 800 million mobile internet users. And the mobile payment is so accessible and convenient in China. So the payment on the mobile internet last year was 11 times of that in the US. So that's how accessible the mobile internet and mobile payment is. And also, AI, the technology, is widely applied in business as well as in media. We have some of the latest business models, like TAO, which is an AI-driven information pusher to the users and consumers, which now covers more than 600 million users on a very active and daily basis. 5G is another infrastructure that the government is committed to build immediately. So the infrastructure, both offline and online, is being strengthened for the past decade or so, which gives a very strong background of business innovation. So we see the economic transitions on many levels from more quantitative growth to qualitative growth, from nature exploitation to environmentally friendly or sustainable development models, from investment-driven to consumption-driven, from manufacturing to smart manufacturing. So that gives kind of an overview of the background of economic transformation. And then, at the same time, we see the Chinese middle class rising and what we call a consumption upgrading. So our GDP per capita is now $8,800 US dollars, which gives us 225 million middle-class population. And that number is growing at 13% every year, which in another five to seven years will give us half of the population in China as the middle class. And the consumption to GDP, which is quite phenomenal, it was only 58% in 2017. And last year, it reached 76%. So consumption is really driving up the economic growth. And the service industries is also growing very fast, contributing almost 60% to the GDP. And we can see faster-going expenditures in education, travel, health, entertainment. And people are not satisfied just with cheap stuff, but quality stuff, brands, emotional resonation, sense of belonging, more personalized and customized services, et cetera, et cetera. And with that said, Chinese women are playing a more active role than, you know, any time in history. We can see that, you know, half of our college graduates and graduate students in China are actually women. And 48% of the labor force are women, although in the leadership level, only 23% are women. But anyway, the overall participation in the labor market is extraordinary. And then, the internet literacy increases flexibility in work-time place. So a lot of women are actually creating their own businesses based on the new economy online. The decentralization empowers formerly marginalized women like in the rural areas or small townships, which give them, you know, totally new opportunities to start up something that they can own. And also, as I said, the upgrading of consumption is creating many new sectors of business and market demands. And women are very sensitive to these pain points and users' experiences. So they are becoming much more active in consumptions, in fashion, in lifestyle, in housing, in education, entertainment, and travel, in industries like that. And innovations of international internet-based business models and the new marketing tools enable very fast and scalable growth. Sometimes it's almost beyond imagination. For example, I was participating in an event in China. This is a company started only four years ago and it sells nothing but only one piece of lipsticks, which serves as moisture as well as giving you different colors, you know, according to the different temperature, different personal experiences. But that's only a single product that they sell. And you can't imagine, within four years, they have developed a sales team of 80,000 women across the country and almost reached $10 billion sales a year. Can you believe that? Single product. I don't know how they would sustain that, but the simple scalability is overwhelming. So women are participating and shaping business innovations. Later on, I want to explain a few examples. Here are some of the hard facts. 35% of online startups are founded by women. 49%, almost half of online stores on Alibaba e-commerce platform are women. 55% of startups by women are in service industries. 36% of women's startup businesses are internet-based. And 70% of women entrepreneurs establish their businesses before they're 35. So they're very young, very dynamic, very active. And they don't look to the old establishment for opportunities in career and business, but rather, they will roll up their sleeves and start something that they can own. So here are a few examples. You will see the growth and the market demand that they try to meet. VIP Kid is growing very fast. Now it's becoming the number-one online one-to-one education by matching half a million young children in China with 60,000 English teachers, mostly from North America, here from the US. And they are licensed language teachers, not just, you know, anyone in the street. So that number is growing so fast, in every neighborhood, you have families and having their children sitting in front of a computer screen and then talk with a teacher in the US. And that tries to meet the demand of Chinese families to have their children, you know, with their English education. Now they have covered teachers and students from 35 countries. And the market value recently has reached $20 billion, which is about over $3 billion US dollars. And remember, that company was nonexistent four years ago. So that started by a woman, a young woman. And here's another example, which is called social e-commerce. We find that women are very, you know, they are very fond of socialized life. So they share their experiences in overseas purchase or fashion or lifestyle in this platform called Red. They have hundreds of thousands of bloggers who share their experiences in beauty, fashion, lifestyle, health, et cetera. And it was founded by a young woman who is from my college in China, who started her business in training, in publishing industry. But now, it has become the biggest social e-commerce platform in China, which also reached the value over $3 billion US dollars. They have more than 100 million active users. And they started online. But now, to sustain the service to their users, they have to develop offline or actual retail stores or experience stores for their users. And a lot of people are purchasing products from overseas market on this platform. Their monthly revenue is over $1 billion. Another model is called self-media. It starts from not a group of people, just a single person. You know, for example, Becky is a journalist and reporter for 13 years in business and then fashion. And then she started out as a very vocal and straightforward speaker on fashion, and thus building up her credibility as a very candid commentator on fashion and also beauty. And then she developed, you know, what we call the KOL model, the key opinion leader model, by attracting millions of followers on her blogger and then a self-media platform. And they have reached meratical sales. For example, they sold 1,200 pairs of shoes within half an hour. And by working with a car company, they sold 100 mini cars within four minutes. So how powerful these opinion leaders can be, they become, you know, sales platforms for fashion and automobiles. And then, the YCloset or ER3 is another model. It's a sharing economy with second-hand rental clothes. By paying 500 yuan, which is like $80 US dollars a year, you have access to a wardrobe or clothes up to $1 million. So they base the business model on a very simple observation, which is that 80% of your clothes, you never wear them more than twice or three times, but only 20% worth owning. So they are exchanging their clothes on this platform. And by an average of three to four times of rental, it's purchased by someone because, you know, they have good experiences. So it's become a shared closet model for millions of women. So we see the strengths and bottlenecks or the weakness or the glass ceilings that women entrepreneurs face in this market. We feel, we find out they are mostly very strongly self-motivated. They have a lot of resilience. Many of them are serious or serial entrepreneurs. They start up some businesses, sometimes fail, but they start again. And also, they show a very strong sense of giving back to the society, social responsibilities. More than 80% of them would hire more women and also give back time and money in philanthropy. But they do share some of the bottlenecks. For example, access to capital. Although women come up to 30% to 35% of new startup businesses in China, they only have access to 10% in the capital market. Scalability is another issue, sometimes limited by their vision or strategy. They never grow out of their own township or the city. And risk management is another issue, although they are much more conscious about risks and rather stay on a safer buffer in the business adventures. But, you know, sometimes investors would encourage them to take more risks in expansion. Also, we experience cultural shifts. Although women are very active, they still have to face a lot of cultural traditions and stereotypes and family roles that the society or families expect from them, especially nowadays when we have two-child policies. So a lot of visible discriminations are put forward by employers, by saying, by wondering, you know, women may take another birth leave. So they are more reluctant to hire women graduates from college. So two-child policy brings up another debate in China. Are women too free or too liberal or actually, they have to make tough choices because they are not free enough? So there are many debates and arguments in the society and also on the policy level. A gender gap in leadership, as I said, on the executive level and board level, women are still below the 23% proportion of the leadership. So these things need to be changed. And one last word is about the organization I founded five years ago, which is Her Village Academy. I'm dedicated to enable systematic and lifelong learning for women to upgrade their mindset and skill set, especially in business and social entrepreneurship, to empower them and connect them both online and offline, and also advocate for a more inclusive society and the gender parity in China. So we offer a curriculum up to 300 hours concerning leadership, happiness, which is more psychology-based relationship awareness and management, and also self-cultivation as well as updates of the political, economic, and the cultural shifts around the world, which we call visions. So what I believe is that now we have got the dividends of investment, dividend of the land, dividend of many other natural resources. But now, we have come to the age of gender dividend because by realizing the full potentials of women, by releasing their creativity and innovation, our business is about to grow further. And also, there's a positive impact on the world economy. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those wonderful remarks and overview. Let me just ask a couple of questions, if I may. One is a kind of general perception question. I think in the United States, you know, there's a growing recognition that there are particular points in time when it's very hard for working women to succeed. You know, when they have young children, aging parents. And also increasingly, it's important to have mentors or sponsors in organizations. There's shareholder activism to try to have corporate leaders focus on what gender pay equity ratios are like. So I think that there is a growing conversation about what's necessary for women to succeed in the workplace. How do you perceive that to be evolving in China? Obviously, these entrepreneurial women are fantastic. But do you feel that there is that internal recognition and pressure within Chinese society to take advantage of the gender dividend?
Well, I think there are two different layers of barriers. One is what I call invisible doorstep. You know, in China, the traditional houses have a very high doorstep. You have to cross it. And another is the glass ceiling that we are all aware of. So I take the invisible doorstep as a step forward by self-motivation. You have to take that step yourself. Nobody can actually make you do that. And then for the glass ceiling, I think it refers to the environment or social environment, which sometimes make you think that because you're a woman, you shouldn't think further, that there's no way you can make it happen. So I think we should work on both ways. On the self-motivation part, I think it's through education and training. And then on the social level, I think we need open discussions on policies. For example, nowadays, working women are reluctant to have their second child, although the country is kind of urging them to bear more baby, to, you know, to mobilize the economy and push it further. But women are reluctant, not just because they have a work balance issue, but also, it's now so expensive to raise a child. And there is so limited access to public services from kindergarten to good schooling that women feel that they have to struggle between them. And also, there are old stereotypes that women can try to make some achievement at a workplace only if she is already a good wife and a good mother. So those invisible boundaries or strains are actually existent. So I think for that one, we need a lot of policy changes and also social, open discussions on these issues.
And some of the infrastructure to help, you know, nannies or helpers or facilities for older people or some of that infrastructure seems very limited in China. Is that correct?
Well, actually, the nanny services are very good in China, very affordable. Almost all the, you know, the middle-class families can afford to have a maid or a support to take care of children and the elderly. But it's the elderly's care which is still kind of falling short to meet the demands. So that's why a lot of developers and investors are in this area. People, senior citizens over 65 years old in China will soon reach more than 10%. So the China society, before it's getting rich, it's aging faster. And that would be a very serious economic and social issue that requires holistic and rounded-up solutions from the government to the market and to families.
Yes, absolutely. You know, you have created a platform and I know you travel the country talking to women and have catalyzed a lot of organizing by women to improve their lives. Could you share a little bit of the flavor of what you are hearing as their obstacles and their ambitions?
Well, even, you know, I, who has been growing up in China and I know my audience very well, I am always well overwhelmed by the eagerness to learn from women. We have seminars and lectures on specific issues. For example, how to start up your business, how to build your brand and nurture it and make it grow, how to achieve organizational growth, how to set up your market strategy, how to have access to capital and financial services. Those themed topics would last two or three days, sometimes five days long. And thousands of women will just show up to listen to those lectures and showing their eagerness and almost hunger to get knowledge because no one else is providing them with that, not the traditional schools or universities, not the other business associations. And I interview and hear these women and girls speak up. And many of them are from the rural areas, little townships, where the tradition is that girls, sisters, they have to give opportunities to their brothers for education and working opportunities. And they are the ones who leave the family to earn money and send it back to their families. But they are so eager for a better life. For example, a young woman, who is one of the sixth children in her own family, she said, "I have never got new clothes for myself. I always wear what my sisters, older sisters and brothers leave me. And so, my dream is to create a closet that I have some good pieces of clothes that I can own myself." So she started by serving as a truck driver. So she's so short, she could hardly, you know, reach the brake in those huge trucks. But that's how she started up her business. And now, she has a company working as a wardrobe advisor to many other women and help to make purchase choices for them. And you see the possibility and their enthusiasm to work really hard and to face a lot of obstacles that sometimes city girls may feel, you know... obstacles that sometimes city girls may feel, you know, terrified to face. But these girls are fearless. They come from nothing, and there's nothing they will lose. So they just go one way straight ahead. And I find, as an enabling platform, our academy is providing them with their limited education background, still the language they can understand, and how to improve their skills in business advancement.
So as you think about women in leadership in China, and it seems like entrepreneurship is one dimension that has scope for women's leadership, are there other areas that you think women are clearly advancing and others where they're clearly not? So I was asking myself, I'm trying to think of the head of a state-owned enterprise that's a woman. Maybe there's one, but I'm having trouble thinking of one, for example.
And actually, according to the UN's assessment, China's gender parity ranks actually not so much on top of the list. It's around eighty-ish or ninety-ish from year to year. And one important reason is political participation. So in China, you will see in the private sector, women in leadership level or executive level is the highest, about twenty-four to twenty-five percent. But then, in the state-owned enterprises, is two points lower. And then, in the government agencies, it's another two points lower. In the National Congress, the women's participation is only twenty-two percent, lower than many developing countries. So, yeah, that is very obvious.
And it's, is it a subject of national discussion, do you think?
Not really.
No.
Not really, no.
Okay. Yeah. So as you think about, you know, we have an enormous number of Chinese students coming to the United States. And actually, I think at Columbia, we have, I can say, at CIPA, we have as many women as men, sometimes more women than men. Do you think that the opportunities to study abroad are equally available to men and women? Is it talent-driven or other factors?
Well, I think it's very, very much talent-driven. As I said, the fast-growing of middle class in China, they, the families and parents are very sacrificing in terms of having their life saved totally into children's education. So you see, many of those families, they're just government, you know, workers or officials or just salary-earning people, but they're really putting up their lifetime saving to enable their children to study abroad, especially in reputable, good schools. And interestingly enough, there was a factor of one-child policy during the past two decades or so, which, one of the unexpected impact was that women suddenly enjoyed opportunities in education and working, which used to be denied to them. And now the families would look forward that their child, only child, boy or girl, to carry out the family name and the family reputation by moving, you know, upwards. So, yes, so I, what I found out is that families would just give their resources to both boys and girls if they can achieve some schooling overseas.
This has been a fantastic, I feel, start to a conversation. I wish we had more time, but we're getting signaled that we do not. But thank you so much for being with us today. Please join me in thanking Yan Wang.
Thank you, everyone. Look forward to your presentations, too.